Any city council discussion?
Yes, I would like a copy of it if you want us to vote on it. I need to have the.
It's not a copy, Mary. It's what the mayor sent a flyer to all of our homes. You didn't receive that?
I did not receive it.
Okay, well, we, some of us.
Oh, I have copies.
Okay.
I'll be glad to give you one.
I would like one. I haven't received anything. I, I don't know if I can get that, but they always put notices on my door. So they lost one.
Okay, Councilwoman Peetla, are you done?
Yeah, if I get a copy of it so I can read it. If y'all want to get something out.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Peetla.
No, I still haven't received it.
Five yeas, one name.
Okay, all right. Um, and then I would, this is a study session, but we have some pertinent items. And so I would like to make items.
See, that's what you have to do for motion to suspend the rules. But that's the problem first, that's what I'm saying. If you want to make an action, I'm just gonna have to suspend rules because you're on the road. I would have to make motion.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, well, I need to move items. Six. Seven. Eight. Ten. Eleven. Fourteen. Fifteen. Rights after public comments.
What is that?
Is there, is there a motion?
You say six, seven, ten, eleven, fourteen, fifteen.
Could you repeat them?
Yep, six. Seven.
Okay.
Eight. Ten.
Okay.
Eleven. Fourteen. Fifteen.
Okay.
After public comments.
Okay, I can move with that.
All right, all right, any city council discussion?
Thank you.
Senior roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
You got any action on it?
Miller.
Not yet. Yes.
Peetla. Six yeas, no names.
She probably had one, she's not here.
Okay, all right. So now we need, uh, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? Senior roll call.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Peetla. Taylor Burks. Six yeas, no names.
All right, all right, um, which brings us to approval of the minutes. All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Senior roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Peetla. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, which brings us to public comment. Proton Carter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Lloyd Gary. And then Chuck Johnson on deck.
All right. I give, I give everyone in council a fact, uh, picture. In July, I was waiting to meet. That last time over here, I heard somebody will say that you can't, there's a certain amount of things that's supposed to change the case. Right? Well, the last four years, those storms have been running into the, into the lake, and I asked the citizens to lie. How do you like something in the weather? And they said, yeah, it's a little snow on the side, yeah. Well, and they do right, I'm glad I'm looking at it, and I think it's a better percent. They don't even go, they don't hold photos, they don't even sign. Uh, I'd like to see a cat school through there, but it's something sixty-seven, got, got some shooting there, so I, after comes that hill, which is nice. Although I don't see it, but it's under the day of night, I do flood the river, and there it is, or two. Next time I'm gonna start taking pictures of this here, but, but, uh, you know, having slowly taken it, waiting, and you know, there's certain individuals that say, well, Peter, I'm not paying attention to this. So, I'm gonna keep taking this thing, and it's gotta find out, we've touched on three, four, three, two, uh, couple, some, some thousands. And I'm gonna keep taking this, and then one of these days, I'm hoping somebody gets harmful, or everybody, or whoever, but somebody, took down all the trees, still got all the, uh, he still got, see where it's off, and everywhere, how did it come, three, I mean, there's two, two images, I found it. He still, he still, he's lost, he's lost all of his stuff, staying, you know, everything's down there by the lake, at, at the lake. So, I don't know, what can I do, I'm gonna, what can I do, but, what else could I do, I'm in a hard time again, and sometimes, well, do your best, I might not be here tomorrow, but I'm gonna bring back a case that's gonna prove.
Bush. I'm gonna bring back a, a, a case that's gonna prove everybody wrong, and certain individuals on this side, I won't mention names because I can't. They're, they're, they're wrong, and I got a whole stack of paperwork that says who owns what. Even the guy owns the middle of the lake on the ground. He owns the mineral rights in the middle of the lake. So, I don't know where you say the city owns all this, when they don't. And I can prove it. Ain't nothing I ain't said yet that ain't been true. So, one of these days, I, I, you know, I get a little emotional, because I'm trying to hold back everything I wanna say. Oh, it's frustrating as heck, but I'm gonna keep going.
Thank, thank, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Chuck Johnson and Billy Swayzer on deck.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. Uh, Patrice kinda stole my opening, but that's all well and good. I just wanna also say that these are tragic times around the country, and when it hits right here at home, uh, with these kinds of tragedies and situations that's happening, it's, I don't know, uh, my wife has an answer, in a sense, for some of it, but, uh, she prays to her Lord that these things will soon stop, and we can move forward with life. I wanna keep in mind here, uh, this is the time of year that, you know, we have to make sure that our heating systems are working, uh, in our homes, uh, there's gonna be some cold, cold nights coming. And I like to make mention of, um, uh, some local contractors, uh, Lazoot Heating over on Orchard Lake Road. Uh, they're a contractor who's licensed, insured, and has a lot of, uh, the equipment that's necessary to repair a furnace. Danny Lawrence, a minority contractor, licensed and insured here in the city of Pontiac. Um, these individuals certainly can, uh, get to your home, uh, in a timely fashion if you need heat or whatever, if your furnace goes out. Um, further, uh, I'd like to make mention of, uh, your, your Christmas season. There's gifts that you're gonna be buying, and various things that you're gonna be looking for. Try looking at the, uh, Main Street Pawn Shop downtown. Those folk over there have some very, very interesting items, uh, of, of all sorts, tools, uh, instruments, jewelry, uh, you name it, they have it. If they don't have it, they'll get it. Uh, just keep in mind, when you go there, just tell Shelby, uh, who's the manager of the store, uh, tell him Chuck Johnson sent you. Thank you very much, and God bless all those at the, uh, Oxford School. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Billy Swayzer and Ms. Karen Jorgensen on deck.
Hello. I'm Billy Swayzer.
This working?
Okay, I wanna remind all the retirees, uh, we're gonna get our health insurance from the city of Pontiac. We're gonna get our health insurance soon, supposedly. Uh, but, this Wednesday, tomorrow, starting at four P M. at the Bowen Center, is open enrollment. So come and sign up for your health insurance if you have not. We're getting health, optical, and dental. And it's on the bottom on the right-hand side, where you sign up for your dental. So make sure you come and sign up for your, your, um, your benefit. Thank you. Uh, four P M. And I don't know if it's four to eight, because the last one was ten to two, so it seemed like it should be for four hours, and they'll have a Zoom meeting before that. Hopefully, it's on the city website. You can't really file, find anything on that web, on the city's website, but maybe they'll allow you to see that. Make sure you sign up for your insurance, because if you don't sign up before December seventh or tenth, the day you're still in dispute, you won't get ins, be able to get insurance until next year, until twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Billy. Um, Ms. Karen Jorgensen and Sonia Watts on deck.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name's Karen Jorgensen. I'm a resident and business owner in downtown Pontiac. Reside at thirty-five North Saginaw, and I'm the co-owner of Pontiac's Little Art Theater and the Green Room Cafe, and I wanted to let you know that we are now open Monday through Saturday, nine to three P M., and we will be open for the parade this Saturday. So if you don't have that on your calendar, it's the fortieth year, and it, uh, will be, um, starting at eleven o'clock, but prior to the parade, there will be a children's program, which is amazing, from eight-thirty until ten-thirty in the morning, and then there'll be a half an hour break, and then the parade will commence at eleven o'clock, and it's usually about an hour to an hour and a half. Um, just wanted to let you know that there are some billboards throughout the downtown that have the incorrect information, so the parade is December fourth, Saturday, at eleven o'clock, and there will be no drive-through or anything happening at M-one concourse, so, um, please, um, take note of that, all right? And if you have not been downtown lately, the, uh, downtown is beautifully decorated with Christmas lights, so please partake and, um, look at our downtown, and also, uh, the lights under, um, the Phoenix Center on Orchard Lake Road is properly lit now, so thank you, whoever was responsible for getting that done.
Thank you.
Next speaker, I got a, uh, text message about the podium mic not being, uh, clear, um, so maybe it's the battery, or if we can switch out a mic.
Testing, testing. Hi.
All right, Sonia.
Hi, my name is Sonia Watt, coming on behalf of my mom who's buried at Oak Hill Cemetery. Um, this was my mom's monument. This is my mom's monument now. Has fallen down. When I contacted Oak Hill Cemetery, they told me that the foundation was bad. My mother hasn't even been in the ground for ten years. I don't understand how the foundation is bad. However, they wanted me to pay four hundred and thirty-two dollars to replace the foundation, but yet they can't give me any type of reason as to why the foundation is bad already. I was told by, uh, company management that the company prior to them taking over didn't do something right. I don't understand how that's my fault or my responsibility. I tried to contact, um, the deputy mayor's office, um, council member, Taylor Burks, no one has gotten back with me. They wouldn't even pick up the headstone to secure it from any further damage until I paid four hundred and thirty-two dollars. I had to call an outside company, Mackenich Monuments, to come in and pick up my mother's headstone to take it back to their premises. I'm still trying to understand why the city of Pontiac isn't taking an issue with this, this management company. They are, they are doing nothing. They wouldn't even pick it up unless I paid them four hundred and thirty-two dollars, which I don't think is my responsibility. So I'm asking that the city of Pontiac take responsibility to at least get my mother's foundation back in that I paid for and get her headstone up. Birthdays are coming up, holidays are coming up, and we have nothing. If I hadn't called in a second company, my mother's headstone would be lying on the ground as we speak. It's disrespectful, and it's disheartening that my mother, who was a, a proud member of the city of Pontiac, that I have to go through all of this. So I'm asking that you guys help me to get her ma, headstone back in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give Councilwoman, uh, Taylor Burks a point of privilege. You gotta turn on your microphone. I can't hear you.
I, I am very sorry to hear that. I did not know that. If you called me, you must have called here and not my home, so I'm gonna give you my home number so we can talk. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, all right, who's next, Proton?
Um, James, James Sebastian and Veronica Taylor on deck.
James here.
According to, uh, paperwork I got from the code process this year, that, uh, the property that I've been living in for sixty years, and the property that I acquired at Oakland County Auction, was, uh, should be made safe or otherwise demolished. Uh, they, whoever is functioning this process does not seem to understand the circumstances. Uh, considerable work had been done on one property, and the other is, was acquired at Oakland County Auction. Nothing more. Uh, I struggle to understand this or deal with this. According, prior to this meeting, and last I heard, in the Oxford Experience, three are dead, eight are hurt, in four different hospitals. Uh, I think something should be learned, but, uh, we should not be in a hurry to come to conclusion, but I think we should learn something from the cause and what went on here. I would leave you with Proverbs four, seven. Wisdom is the prime thing. Acquire wisdom, and with all that you acquire, acquire understanding. The Oxford Experience is gonna challenge everyone from the outside and the parents involved. Three dead, eight hurt, in four hospitals. Thank you, Council, Mayor, and the city of Pontiac.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Veronica Taylor.
Good evening, city of Pontiac and viewers. First, I wanna honor God, who's the head of our lot. I'm asking God to bless and take care of this world right about now. We have a lot not going on in Oxford, but we have a lot of shootings going on in Pontiac, period. I'm asking these pastors and all you all that's got your last thirty days up in here, for us to start praying more for this city. We got a new councilman coming in, we got new mayor coming in, and we need to start coming together as a collective of a family and take care of this city. First of all, I wanna thank Pastor Parker, Dr. Talbot, and a couple of other people for sending me to Washington. I'm proud to say I am a member of Pontiac and representing you all to walk with our president and the first vice president of the United States. And I'm asking you to please, please, start praying more, and start giving more respect to our elders that's locked up in, in these places and need help. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. President, any other public comments?
Okay, thank you, which brings us to item number two, which is special, uh, oh, yeah, we moved up item, oh, these, yep, item number six, I'm sorry, which is a resolution to approve the city council twenty-twenty-two meeting schedule. Is there a motion? Oh, we got, we need to suspend rules first. I need a motion to suspend the rules? Yeah. Yeah, so, all right, roll call on suspending the rules, and so, yeah, I need to suspend the rules on, read the motions, uh, the numbers, Mr. Court.
A motion to suspend the rules on items six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, fourteen, and fifteen.
Is there a motion? Okay. Need support? All right, it's been moved and supported. Roll call on suspending the rules?
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Peetla. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Six yeas, no names.
Okay, uh, item number six is a resolution to approve the city council two thousand twenty-two meeting schedule. Um, is there a motion?
I got a question.
Yeah, well, we, we got to have a motion first. Uh, yeah, all right, uh, is there a motion?
No.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All right, discussion, Councilwoman Melvin?
Isn't on agenda, why do we have this on agenda? We got a new council coming, ain't they do that themselves?
Well, we need to publish the meeting, and then the customary thing is we publish the meeting, and then if they wanna amend the meeting, when they go in, they can decide when they come up with their council rules, if they wanna change the meeting date, et cetera, et cetera. But we need to have a meeting scheduled, so at least they'll have the first meetings there, and then they can go and deliberate afterwards.
Uh, okay, go ahead.
I have the same question, because, uh, January first ideally is New Year's, so ideally that's the first official meeting, after the swearing-in, correct?
No.
No.
Not, not this one?
Go ahead, Mr. Court.
That's what I've always known for, since nineteen ninety-two.
Okay.
When I was called today, no.
Excuse me, excuse me, you haven't been recognized by the chair. Um, go ahead, uh, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the charter says that the new council takes office on the first official business day of the new year, after the, uh, holiday, after the holiday. So the city is closed on January second, well, January first, you know, is a Sun, Saturday, I'm sorry. City, city is closed on Monday in honor of, uh, New Year's, which would be January the third, so the first official business day of twenty twenty-two for the city of Pontiac will be January fourth. So the, the meeting has to occur at twelve noon, because it says in the charter that the city council takes office at twelve noon on that first official business day, so it will be January fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President.
Okay, Councilwoman Peetla.
It does not say they take office that day. It says that their first business is conducted the first business day after the first of the year. We have always been sworn in on the first of the year. That has always been from as far back as I can remember coming to city hall, and that was in nineteen ninety-two.
All I'm saying is that, uh, I, maybe we can make a date for the first and let them, you know, set their dates, you know, maybe be, maybe different anyway.
Yes, Attorney Sheriff.
Just again, it's three point one oh three, beginning of term. The term of each council member begins at noon on the first business day after January first following the.
That, that's when their first meeting is?
Business day after, business day after January first, business day.
That, that is their first day of business. That is not just swearing in. We have always been sworn in at noon on the first.
On the first?
I could weigh in on that. I, I recall specifically in two thousand seventeen, standing in that doorway on a Sunday, during the swearing-in ceremony, so.
On Sunday the first.
Exactly.
Oh, thank you, Chuck. I got a memory.
Excuse me, order, order, order.
Technically, any council member, and several of the new council members have already been sworn in, at their, the, after the election has been certified, they can be sworn in. So three council members have already been sworn in. That's council member-elect Carrington, Parker, and, uh, McGinnis. So there is nothing that require, but it's up to the new council to determine if they wanna have a ceremonial swearing-in, but their first official meeting, per the charter, will be January fourth at twelve noon.
So for clarity, just for clarity, we are approving the schedule of meetings. If they want to meet at twelve o'clock on New Year's Day, and they decide to do that, that will be on them. According to the actual charter, the conduction of business needs to be scheduled for the next year. They can amend it, they can do whatever they want to do, but they cannot meet on a Sunday and conduct business before twelve noon, is what I'm, is the whole point. And so the first official meeting is where they usually pick officers and everything else that goes along with that. That is separate from the swearing-in ceremony that we all had, because the ser, the swearing-in ceremony that we had was a joyous occasion, but no action was taken. So we've all been sitting up here three or four times, and I think we had one on a Saturday, one on a Sunday, and one on a Monday, because it fell, uh, it fell on a different day, but that has nothing to do with their obligation to conduct what we are conducting today that I have to go through deliberately is a city council meeting, and so what we are scheduling is a meeting, and not to swearing-in. So I just wanna put that for clarity before we go forward. Okay, so, uh, any other discussion? Senior roll call.
Miller?
No.
Peetla?
Yes.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Five yeas, one name.
All right, which brings us to item number seven, resolution to approve amended contract with, uh, Clean Net of Greater Michigan to include an extension service for the period of two years, uh, with an hourly living wage increase. Um, this needs to be altered. Um, first of all, the contract needs to be a one-year contract, as said in, uh, in the packet. Uh, without this two-year increase, I don't understand why we would be saddling a new administration with a cleaning contract for services with a cost of living increase, when we had to argue to get employees that work for the city, uh, their hazard pay. So, uh, so why would we be doing this, a particular thing, especially at the twelfth hour? The reason that I would even, the only reason that I'm even, uh, agreeing to vote on this contract is because it expires December thirty-first, and so we have to take some action as a council. But I would, I, I would recommend to my colleagues that we don't vote on anything other than the one-year extension as it is. Attorney Sheriff.
Uh, just to let you, just to clarify, it's actually twelve one.
Oh, twelve one, okay, that's it, yeah.
The, the city has option to extend the contract for one more year from twelve one twenty-one through eleven thirty twenty-two, with the same terms and conditions of the original contract. It was proposed by the mayor to do the cost of living increase, at which, uh, Clean Net agreed to do that, to pay their employees fifteen dollars, provided that the contract was extended for two. But they are willing to do, according to this document, this memorandum, they are court, uh, willing to do one year with the same terms and conditions.
Yes, Mr. Uh, Chair, I can speak to that. Uh, the administration did present this contract, as we have, uh, the contract, it's our, uh, duty to do that, and one of the things, this could have been just extended, there was a, a provision that we just administratively extended for one year. But, uh, I thought it was important for something that we have adopted as a city, uh, as we pay our workers a minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour, because we think it's important to establish the fact that people deserve a livable wage.
Yes.
Based on, but our contractor, we found out. Based on, but our contractor, we found out, was not paying their workers $15 an hour. So, instead of just rubber stamping what had been done before, as I could have done, I decided it was important enough in principle to establish that we want to make sure that our contractors were not also shielded from paying $15 per hour, that that should be universal for any contract that the city of Pontiac signed. And I am now submitting that to you. Now, because this is of more cost, the city had to come back, the council to be approved and that's why it's presented today. I hope the council does agree with me that we know, only want our workers to be paid, but anybody the city hires should also be paying their workers a livable wage as well.
Uh, thank.
And I hope you will agree with me.
Uh, thank.
Now, whether you do it for one or two years, because of the increased costs to the contractor, they asked it to be for two years.
Okay.
Because it's essential to them, but if you're only going to do it for one year, then we'll go back to them and say, would you take it and still pay the $15 an hour for one year?
So, uh, hold on, two, two things, Madam Mayor. First, all contracts need to be approved by the city council. So, for you to say that you brought it back to us as a courtesy is problematic on so many different levels.
No, no, not what I said.
Yeah, yes.
That it'd be, that we had a way, it was already written in the previous contract the council approved, that we could automatically extend it as just administration, that not have to be brought back. That was written into the council, the last contract by the council.
Attorney Sheriff.
You read the last contract.
Attorney Sheriff.
So, again, according to this memorandum, you have the option to extend for one year with the same terms and conditions, meaning the same amount. It was the mayor's initiative to suggest the $15. So, therefore, if council is agreeing to extend with the same terms and conditions, that does not include an increased hourly rate of $15.
Okay. So, what action do we need to take? If we want to just keep the contract the same?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh-uh, no. Read it.
What currently you have, what we have. To extend the contract for the one year with the same terms and conditions, not at the $15.
Correct.
Yeah, so, one of the things really that is not conducive and this contract needs to be reworked is the youth recreation center on Golf Drive is in this contract. And so, to change it, we would be extending two years with this $15 an hour there.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, 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 yeah. What I, listen, listen to what I'm saying to you. That's what we would be doing if we extended this to 2023, councilwoman people.
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying, no, we do not need to have them cleaning the youth recreation or at $15 to $16 an hour because I did hear from somebody in this building, is all I'm going to say, somebody in this building, if we're going to pay them $15, $16 an hour, DPW can take over the cleaning. We don't have to go on the outside.
Well, just to bring things to clarity, the $15 an hour was a council mandate that we brought together and put together for people to get paid a living wage. It started with our wonderful cleaning crew that is actually here at city hall because they were getting underpaid by the current, the contractor that they were previously using. And then we brought them back and we had to fight tooth and nail and actually had to supplement their salary out of a city council item in order for that to happen. So, I'm glad that the mayor has come around to making sure that these people will get $15 an hour. What I'm not sure of is that we extend a contract for two years that we don't have to.
Oh, Council President?
Yes.
So, I would suggest, so again, with that, because the provision is in there for youth recreation center, right? The vendor shall provide a day porter who must be present from 10 to 5, Monday through Friday, 52 weeks per year. So, obviously, if this location is coming out, again, there's no reason to go at the increased amount because that's less of an obligation.
Right.
Correct?
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in agreement. So, I guess the, the question Attorney Sharp is because this provision, hold on, because this provision ends on December the first. And Golf Drive, Golf Drive is in this provision. We can't approve this contract without approving the Golf Drive in it.
Well, my question is, Mr. President, would Golf Drive inclusive in the first place in the COVID college?
What I'm saying to you is when we did the contract with these people, no, I, I agree, the administration should have took Golf Drive out, but clearly that's a different, that's item number 18. So, my, my question though is, and maybe Mr. Clark can help with this. How do we proceed with the building, with taking out a building that the city council had voted not to be in and not to extend a lease on over six months ago?
Mr. Chair, it's in section 28. It very states the termination for convenience clause. Number eight, the city reserves the absolute right to terminate the contract in whole or in part for the convenience of the city at sole discretion on 30 days' written notice to the contractor.
So, what?
Right now, the youth recreation center is still being used, but if it's not, when it's not used, then we can take that out of the contract with 30 days' notice.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll ask Attorney Clark, so.
Council Presidents, I, I think the council has three options. They could extend the contract for a year as submitted. They could extend the contract for two years with the terms proposed by the administration or they could approve the contract striking the one property with the understanding that that has to be accepted by the contractor and the contractor could refuse that modification and walk.
Okay. So, so I would like option number three. So, can you read the language, Mr. Clark, that the clerk needs to put in? And then we can get a move and support after that.
The, the address that's being removed, if you could provide that, please?
Youth Recreation Center 825 Golf Drive, Pontiac, Michigan 48341.
So, it'd be a motion to approve the proposed contract with CleanNet of Greater Michigan under the same terms and conditions for a period of one year ending November 30th, 2022, with the exception of the removal of the youth recreation center 825 Golf Drive, Pontiac, 48541.
48341.
Okay, sorry. I tried to write all that down as fast as I could.
I move it.
Hold on. And we also need to put in, and not to exceed the amount of $135,623. Okay, is there a move and support?
Support.
Yeah, move.
Yeah. Okay. I'll take the move from Waterman and support from Pedala. Any city council discussion? CNN, roll call?
Pedala?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Six J's, no names.
Okay, all right, which brings us to item number eight, which is a resolution to schedule a public hearing for program year 2021 for block grant. Is there a motion?
Move.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, any city council discussion? All right, CNN, roll call?
Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller? Pedala?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
For the people who are just coming into the council chambers, if you could make sure you got a mask as we're going on to try to keep safety protocols. All right, which brings us to item number 10, I believe, which is a resolution to authorize the city clerk to post notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021 in the Oakland Press to allocate is that $8 million to the VIBA retiree healthcare opt-out fund to receive funding from GERS and to allocate funds for the city to make the opt-out payments to retirees. Is there a motion?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported now, it's time for discussion. Councilwoman Waterman?
Thank you. Mr. President, we passed this, but I guess I have a question and concern as it relates to, we had, we were told there were 270 retirees who opt out. Find out that some of the people who thought that they could opt out could not opt out because they were spouses, so they could not opt out. So, I don't know if it's, if they will be getting that $20,000. So, it was 270. Now, I think there was less, 100, so it might be 170, maybe our finance director can enlighten me as that, but I would like with this amendment that the additional money would go into the VIBA, that it would be, whatever extra money is from that 8 million would go.
Um, so, 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 um.
Did I put in company? Was somebody standing?
I was, I was going to respond.
Oh, I thought somebody else was standing while I was trying to.
So, through, through the council chair, Councilwoman Waterman, specifically as it relates to the funding, as, as, as you're aware and just for everybody, everyone's understanding, as part of the transfer of assets from GERS to the new GERS into the VIBA, the city recently, when I say recently, within the last month or so, amended the, the trust agreement, the VIBA trust agreement, I believe is the document. And that VIBA trust agreement, the amendment redirected $8 million to the city to make these opt-out payments. That's the purpose of the, of the item before you this evening. And as part of that amendment, the city would hold the additional monies in trust specifically for the purpose of paying any future opt-outs. And then once it's determined that everyone has either, you know, opted in, opted out, there's no one remaining, those monies are required to be returned, or not be returned, but to go to the, to the new VIBA. So, those, those stipulations are in the agreement, the amendment, I should say, and the city, you know, from an administrative standpoint, we would be holding those monies in a restricted fund specifically and only for the purpose of paying opt-outs. And once that's done and that process has been completed, which will take several years, not to make the payments, but for people to continue to retire, the city is required to send that money onto the, any remaining money onto the new VIBA.
Can the council have a copy of that?
For sure. I can make sure we get a copy of that, that trusted, is the VIBA trust amendment.
Can you, can you speak in the microphone, please? This is being recorded, thank you.
This was previously approved by council. It came before you, I believe it was in August, and then it was also approved by the VIBA board.
I know about the ignorant, I'm talking about the language that he just.
I, I would say make sure we get that, get that over to you for sure.
Okay, anybody else got questions? Or concerns? Okay. CNN, roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pedala?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
All right.
President?
Yes, Council.
One thing, please, sir. Can I, can we get a detail of how many people have opt out?
If I could, I could address that as well, Councilwoman Waterman. So, this was a very painstaking process. We did have an initial deadline, there were some issues regarding that. We did have several individuals opt out. We also made a determination that those that are deferred employees or retirees at some point would be able, eligible to opt out and receive a $20,000, $20,000 payment when they become eligible for healthcare. So, we made a very conservative move to basically include all of the deferreds in the event that all of them select the opt-out. I don't think that that's going to happen, but we made a very conservative decision to do that so that the city had enough money to pay those opt-out payments at the time that they came due. And as the finance director said, those that, any money left over will be transferred back to the VIBA to cover the cost of the healthcare benefits.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. Which brings, go ahead, Council.
So, how many, I know you mentioned 270, so, someone would, if I had to call me, they would have been able to receive the money, so.
So, they wouldn't be able to get the money, so what I'm hearing from Attorney Clark is that when they do become of age, then they have that option?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, which brings us to item number 11, which is a resolution for the city clerk to post notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021, 2022 in the Oakland Press to move funding of the grant writer position from finance to economic and community development by reallocating a total of $34,800 from general ledger account 101206702.00 to general ledger account 101690702.00. And so, who's presenting on this? I will just make this caveat to my colleagues at council. With less than a month left, I have no idea why these particular positions are being moved to different funds, especially when they are currently hiring positions that are not budgeted by council and paying these people who are now sending the emails about health and safety and wellness in the city of Pontiac. So, I just want to make that clear and then I'll turn it over to administration to ask why they want this budget amendment.
This is just a housekeeping item and our, our finance director can speak to that. We do have a grant writer now and that is a budgeted position, except on the organizational structure, we actually have been working with economic development. It's just a kind of a, the finance director said maybe we should do that just for finance. It doesn't mean any difference, it's just the same person. It's just that instead of putting them under a finance budget, we're putting them under economic development budget. I must say, the grant writer has generated quite a few grant funds already and will be the person that is now working with the consultant that we got $100,000 grant from the Community Southeast Michigan Foundation in order to reestablish our own grant department that was terminated by the emergency manager. We want to bring that back in house so we can also bring the administration of our CBPG block grant fund and federal funds back in house. That, as you remember, was turned over to the county by the, by the third emergency manager and we have been paying Oakland County 20% administration to administer that fees over the last six years, that is $2 million.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the, the question was specific, specifically about a budget amendment, not the quality of the grant writer. And so, according to the title that's in our flow chart, Madam Mayor, we have a grant writer in contract compliance.
Yes.
The position was put in and recommended by the city council years ago, so we don't argue the merits of having a grant writer. What we've always been arguing and contending is that we haven't had contract compliance in the city of Pontiac and that has led to shoddy work being across the board in some of these contracts not being looked at for years, but that's not the point. The point is from the finance director, why are we moving this money at this particular time?
Thank you, Council President. As the mayor alluded to, administratively, you know, from an operational standpoint, the position is up under the finance director, but just from, again, from an operational standpoint, the work that Ms. Bornghessler has been doing, you see she has item number 15 as a grant that she has secured. And I know we're not, we're not questioning the, the contribution that she makes, you know, she does a fabulous job, but the, the reality is she works up under economic development. Again, from an operational standpoint, I love working with Ms. Bornghessler, we have a great working relationship, but I largely engage with her just in terms of the finances, the accounting and so forth. So, you know, we presented this item so it would reflect what the administration is doing from an operational standpoint, that's why it's in front of you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, um, um, Councilwoman Miller, then Attorney Sharp.
Uh, Mr. Carey, I just had one question to ask you.
Maybe I'm not, I'm trying to initialize this in my head, am I correct, there's a new administration coming in in four, four to five weeks?
Yes.
I've been here for years, I've seen new administration. Let's be honest, we don't even know who's staying, who's going, why would we do this? I mean, this doesn't make any sense, this is abstinence to me. It would be, it would be irresponsible of the council even do this. I mean, really, I know you probably can't answer, I'm sure you...
You said, you said one question, but, um...
I mean, why would we approve a person for a position, and you don't know what change is gonna be made in three or four weeks from now?
And, and, and I'm, I'm not, not here to, to obviously debate that, again, the, uh, you know, I think the reality is, there, uh, operationally, uh, what the position has entail, um, as the mayor alluded to, there's a lot of work that's going on, we know there's gonna be a lot of work, um, related to ARP, um, there's work that's going on with the hundred thousand dollar grant that, uh, the, 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 uh, grant writers is working with, uh, cons- outside consultants, um, in order to take a look at how we can, uh, better administer, administer those grants, um, and so, uh, while obviously there's a new administration, a new council coming in, um, you know, this, I, I believe is, is, is reflective of what, um, you know, organizationally is in the best interest of the city, and that's why the item was presented again before council this evening.
I'll just, I'll just say this real briefly, the day the new mayor walks in, everything changes.
Without question. I think that's understood.
Attorney Sharp?
Um, I would just remind council that obviously, what was it, last week that you voted down the position, the, the funds for an unbudgeted position with deputy, uh, finance director?
Deputy Finance.
This position was already funded, there's no question, there's, the money is there for this position. If in fact you move it because you're, you're purchasing person, that position is open, these funds would allow for that person to have, to be paid. So that is my theory with that. This is because of the fact that you have a person currently working in a position that is not funded.
That's funded, so they're moved to that.
All right. Any other counsel?
I guess my question...
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Waterman.
Sometimes I wonder, but...
No, you can't, you can't make it up.
A lot of times I wonder.
Um, how much is this position?
The, um, so the...
I think it ain't making just no thirty-four thousand dollars. I know, so I wanna know what the total is. Ooh, ooh, woo, 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 woo.
Okay.
So, so the thirty, the thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars is the, um, money that was budgeted, um, for this fiscal year, and it's the remaining funds, um, on a pro, on a prorata share through, through the end of July, through the end of June for the remainder of the fiscal year?
So he didn't answer your question, but, um, is there a motion so we can vote on this item?
Yeah, move, move it.
Okay, I need support? All right, it's been supported by Taylor Burks. Yep, any other city council discussion? All right, CNN, roll call. You calling me first?
Waterman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Hila?
No.
Taylor Burks?
No.
Zero Y's, six A's.
Okay, motion fails, so there will be no budget hearing, um, so that brings us to item number fourteen, and this is long overdue, is there a motion?
Uh, so moved.
All right, move and support, this is the, uh, settlement payment to the, uh, police officers, um, okay. Any city council discussion? CNN, roll call?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hila?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's.
All right, which brings us to item number fifteen, resolution to accept a ninety thousand dollar grant from Nextfinity Initiative to support infrastructure improvement at Pontiac Senior Centers. Is there a motion to?
Move.
Support.
All right, move and support, any discussion? I do wanna recognize Attorney Sharp because her and the grant writer went, uh, back and forth about this, um, through email.
Yeah, that's correct, um, I did get the information, um, that we requested in terms of, uh, what was required, and I actually reviewed the application, and so, uh, I am pleased with the information that I've received.
Okay, any, uh, council discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, now, Councilwoman Taylor Burks.
When, when the, um, other council, uh, uh, people take office and, and start going through some of this in their meetings, uh, suppose that they make a decision that we have one large senior center anyway?
That'll be for them to deal with, Dr. Taylor, either we want this money or we don't.
We want the money.
We want the money.
Okay, all right, all right, um, roll call?
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
I did.
Hila?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's.
All right, so that brings us back to, uh, the top of the agenda, uh, special presentations.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I know we got these presentations, but I have some people here...
Yes, yeah, we can move, we can move them up, uh, yes. Uh, is there a motion to suspend the rules to move, uh, item, uh, five A and five B?
I move.
All right. Okay, we just, we got a vote on suspending the rules, roll call?
Yes.
Hila?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's.
Okay, uh, if you wanna call them up for presentation, uh, Councilwoman Waterman?
Oh, well, I'll take it. Um, I have Attorney Billings here, who is our attorney for the GERS. Can't hear me? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Attorney Cynthia Billings is the attorney for the General Employees Retirement System. She is going to explain the two ordinances that are before you. The ordinance that is in the packet, it is an amendment, uh, just an amendment to what is being presented, so I don't know, uh, Attorney Billings, if you've seen this one, but we have it in our packet, let me give you this.
Okay, so essentially, the amendments pertain to continuing the four hundred dollar monthly stipend that the retirees have been receiving for the last almost ten years. So you have three, there's three amendments that you should have copies of. One amendment is for the old GERS, and the second amendment is for the new GERS, and essentially what that does is it would extend the four hundred dollar monthly stipend on a permanent basis for the remainder of the retiree and of their beneficiaries' lives. At the last council meeting, I believe the council members had some concerns over, um, you know, they wanted some safeguards in there. So the actuary for the retirement system recommended that the benefit be paid provided the retirement system maintains at least a hundred and thirteen percent funded level. So that's, uh, that was the change that was made from the, the proposal that I believe you were reviewing at your last meeting. So essentially what it states is that effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, all current and future eligible individuals who are receiving a pension benefit from the GERS shall be entitled to receive an annual stipend of forty-eight hundred dollars. This stipend shall be paid in July of each year provided that the prior year's annual valuation calculated using the same actuarial assumptions used in the termination valuation determines that the system is at least a hundred and thirteen percent funded. For the period of January twenty twenty-two through July twenty twenty-two, retirees shall receive a prorata stipend of twenty-four hundred dollars payable in monthly installments. The stipend benefit is payable for the lifetime of the retiree and eligible surviving beneficiary provided that no stipend shall be paid for the subsequent year should the annual valuation de- uh, calculated using the termination valuation assumptions determine that the system's funded level is below a hundred and thirteen percent. The second amendment would be for the new GERS and it's identical, so it would continue that four hundred dollars, and it would be contingent upon the system maintaining a hundred and thirteen percent funded level. Um, I would also mention the amendment for the old GERS, this is the termination amendment. We clarified, um, you were talking a little earlier about the eight million dollars, and we did clarify in this amendment that once all of the one-time payments, those, uh, twenty thousand dollars that are described in the settlement agreement have been paid, any excess funds would be paid as soon as administratively feasible to the VIBA. So just another, uh, mention that that excess money would be paid to the VIBA. The third amendment that is in your packet would continue, right now, the, um, the four hundred dollar stipend is set to expire in December, and the retirees are not, uh, it's not anticipated that they're going to have their healthcare benefits until February, so this amendment would continue the four hundred dollar stipend for the period of one year or until their health insurance, uh, uh, commences, just in case, you never know if it gets delayed, we don't wanna have to come back and keep extending it, so, uh, that would be the third amendment.
That, that's the one that we passed two weeks ago.
Okay, uh, and so, uh, Councilwoman Waterman, that's, uh, also item number five, because we talked last week, uh, we talked last week about, um, making sure that people got this additional four hundred dollars for all the retirees, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then there was some back and forth between, uh, the administration getting an actuary and what they needed to include or whatever, so I asked that item number five be put on to make sure that they don't have any lapse in their four hundred dollars while this, these other amendments get worked out. So that's why item number five is on the agenda tonight, just wanted to make that clear to all of my colleagues, because we voted on it, um, but we wanna make sure that we have a safeguard because we don't know if the new amendments are gonna get vetoed or whatever else that happens with it, so I wanna make sure that we know that we're leaving them with what we promised them, and then hopefully we can work out the additional, because I don't know what the IRS is gonna say and some other things about, uh, the new four hundred dollars that's promised to everybody.
I said... Council President?
Yeah, go ahead, Attorney Burks.
I could address, um, there's obviously been some confusion here regarding this permanent extension versus the temporary, uh, on the temporary, and I did speak with, with Attorney Sharp yesterday when I saw it on the agenda, the actuarial study, what, what was voted on by council, I understand, he was to request the actuarial study for the temporary extension. Uh, uh, Finance Director Carrington did speak with, uh, uh, the Director of the GERS, apparently that study has been ordered, it is not completed, therefore, council pursuant to Public Act three fourteen cannot act on the temporary, uh, extension ordinance until you have that actuarial study in hand seven days, and, and the state law literally sets seven days. So the council cannot vote on that until that study is in hand, we hope they have it anytime and will be provided to you immediately so that that matter can be at least considered. The bigger picture, uh, is in terms of the permanent extensions, and those ordinances I, I just did receive today, we have, I have to remind everybody, this entire process is all about the settlement agreement and, and complying with the settlement agreement, and the way that this has been teed up right now will essentially result in forty-nine million dollars less being transferred to the VIBA. And in my discussions with Attorney Gibbs, who represents CIPRIA, he indicated that's not happening, okay? Now, you know, his board may tell him otherwise, I'd be surprised, but their issue is the funding of the healthcare benefits, and so that's the issue, and so what, what I'm primarily tasked with is making sure the city doesn't violate the settlement agreement, and so I'm very concerned about the way this has been set up and the fact that that could happen, so I just wanna put out a word of caution that that, that needs to be addressed. Thank you, thank you.
I would, if I could, I'd like to take a minute, I don't have Public Act three fourteen in front of me, but I think as long as they get the, um, the study seven days before the effective date, I don't, I think they probably could act tonight, but I'd wanna double check the act on that.
Take action, but I, I certainly don't wanna jeopardize or, or, you know, smith the council to violation of state law.
Okay, that's fine, as long as it's, as long as we have the study session right now, we're speaking on it, we can deal with this, uh, next, uh, next Thursday, uh, yeah, next Tuesday, next Tuesday. But, um, I just wanted this placed on the record so my colleagues would know exactly what's going on, and when you talk about the settlement agreement, it says, the settlement agreement states that the new GERS will be funded a hundred and thirty percent of the liabilities of old GERS. If passed by council, the new benefit will be fully pre-funded and pre-funded at a hundred and thirty percent of the new benefit amount. These are two measures to try to ensure that the city insulates from future contributions. So, um, there's something else, okay, the ord- the ordinance was revised to address the council concerns, stipend would not be paid for the following year if the annual actuary evaluation determined that the system is less than a hundred and thirteen percent funded. So put in place, as, as my colleagues was asking, to make sure that the trickle-down system would be, so the city would not have to pay, would not have to contribute into this health insurance, and I think the things that have been presented right now are, are good, good methods, and I did ask that Ms. Copass be able to sit and talk with Attorney Billings, I think maybe they need to have some more discussion where we can get this thing taken care of because it's just gone on long enough.
Yeah, uh, and Councilwoman Waterman, I'm glad that, uh, you spelled out the actual amount that the retirees will get, so it can be that four hundred dollars a month, um, because that was important, uh, to me, uh, Ms. Copass?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that, um, Councilwoman Waterman said that the settlement agreement in section six says that you're looking at the pension liabilities of the old GERS, and I understand that the amendment that's being proposed today is to change what those liabilities would be, but that doesn't change the fact of what the bargaining parties to the settlement agreement agreed to over three years ago, um, and that totally relates to what was in the GERS at that time. And so we are, uh, strongly anticipating CIPRIA to come in and say, based on conversations, again, that Mr. Clark has had with Mr. Gibbs, that there was no meeting of the minds for that settlement agreement, and it would be violation of the settlement agreement to include it.
Okay, also, in section six of the settlement agreement provides that the city and CIPRIA approve the assumption used for valuations.
It does say that, but I would also...
What it says?
I would also indicate that the assumptions would be what the plan provisions say as well.
That's, that's, that's opinions of the mind now, so that's why you two need to probably sit down.
Well, I, we've, I know that the city has tried to set up, um, multiple meetings with the GERS board, um, I'm happy to sit down with Cynthia when people are ready to discuss.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, may I speak as I was one of the fighters of the bargaining settlement agreement?
And, and I'm, I'm in objection to that piece, uh, also, because one of the problems, and, uh, Councilman, ex-Councilman Holland is here, um, with that is the negotiation shouldn't have had an invested party on the side of making this happen. If CIPRIA has a problem with them getting four hundred dollars because even though they are a small class of the bigger retiree system, that makes absolutely no sense for them to go against their interests, and I haven't got called from any retiree that told me they don't want four hundred dollars a month. I haven't got it, and so what I'm saying is we have a public forum, they know this will be on the agenda next week, and so, uh, if you have, uh, objection, I would love to hear it before the council votes on it.
I have an objection, I'm speaking as a fighter, who spent, uh, two years, almost... We spent two years almost in mediation with the negotiating team led by John Cock attorney on behalf of the city as well as CIPRIA to bring this novel solution to our retirees who had their healthcare taken away. We are all in agreement that we want that to be restored. In fact, we have given the retirees a date, in fact, we have given the opt-out people a date of December 15th to get their $20,000. That depends on the GERS fund transferring the money that the city needs to pay back. So that's why we're moving along, want to move this along. But in addition to that, we're all agreed, and I'm happy to see the council is agree too, that there's money left at that 130 percent funding in the way the new GERS will be established to pay that additional $400 a month, permanent increase, which we knew at the time of mediation was probably so, but we are here now, we're here at the point where we can deliver that. I'm so proud of what we have done at the city to restore that for our retirees. I'm fully agree with what you do. It just, we have to buy by, as the attorney says...
Okay, thank you, thank you.
We have to buy by state law, Public Act...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counsel President.
Yes, Attorney Sharp.
I just have a question, a procedural question. So if council votes on any of these amendments, and I guess this will be a question for the clerk, if they vote on that, is that to publish or is that, because this doesn't say emergency, so can you just clarify what needs to happen procedure?
So procedurally, I'll put all these on the agenda next week as a first reading. If there's any type of amendments need to be made, then I'll publish an ordinance summary and then the council can take action on the following.
Okay, Councilwoman Waterman, are you good with that?
I have one comment.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
You know, I just can't miss my colleague, Patrice Waterman. If I'm not mistaken, wasn't the mayor that asked initially we wanted the $400 for everybody? Thought she wanted to take it back.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
No, I didn't ask you that, Waterman.
Well, I'd like to clarify the distinction because I think the distinction is really important.
Okay, well, let Councilwoman Waterman, then I recognize you.
Yeah, this was something that, that she was proposing and now because council and the GERS Board is doing something, now we, now we have all this. But I'm, I'm not going to digress on that. What I'm going to do is make sure that the parties at B, the attorneys, get together and get the wording and get what we need to get done because there is a retiree I asked about who is 99 years old, 99. We have a retiree who is 99 years old and I would love for him to have his healthcare insurance. So that's, that's my main purpose in here. All this other stuff, I got no time for it no more.
Okay, all right, we're gonna...
So I can't be recognized?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kopaski.
My, my point is that the mayor's proposal was to take the $400 permanent increase after the assets are transferred. That's where the distinction lies and that's where the main argument is coming from with the problem with, with the settlement agreement. If the, if the $400 is accounted for post asset transfer, we don't have a settlement agreement issue.
Ms. Kopaski, we discussed this in length last Tuesday.
Yeah, but we're still discussing.
No, excuse me, we're rehashing it. Clearly, the directive from the council and I guess the administration at this point was for you to work with Ms. Billings to come to a meeting of the minds to make sure that we give these retirees who have duly worked for the city $400 and give them their money. So what I'm saying to you is I don't want to get caught up in the making the sausage. What I want next Tuesday is the actual sausage so we can vote on it and then we can go from there. And then the mayor will have an opportunity, if she doesn't like how the sausage, what the taste of the sausage is, she can veto it and then it can come back to the council and then we can either override that veto or not and then we'll go from that point. But right now, we just need to come to some clarity. These people have been waiting for healthcare since I got on City Council. So we're gonna move on to item number two.
Okay, I just asked that GERS Board allows me to meet with these colleagues.
Thank you. Special presentation, election.
We've got more than this.
From the clerk's office. Yes, I need to, I haven't sat this time in a long time. I need to know how to work with it.
It's not working right.
So, thank you, Mr. President. This presentation will be brief, just an update on the, on the election. So actually, in the City of Pontiac, we will have a special election in May and the purpose of the special election will be to elect charter commissioners. If the public remembers back in August, you approved Proposal A, which was for a charter revision. Since it was too late to put that, to elect charter commissioners on the November ballot, and per City Attorney Chubb, we have to schedule a special election in May, which will be May 3rd of 2022, to elect charter commissioners. We will be electing nine charter commissioners, them that will be elected citywide. And the point of this is because if anyone is interested in running for the charter commission, they must submit nominating petitions in an affidavit of identity no later than January 18th, 2022. So please contact the clerk's office, we can get you the information as to how many petitions you need to circulate and all the other requirements that you will need to make meet. But the important factor is January 18th, 2022 is the deadline. Again, we will be electing nine members citywide to serve on the charter commission. And then the charter commission will have up to three years to put together a new charter for the city to approve. That's all I had as related to that matter. Sure.
I know, what is the criteria for the nine members? Nor is it run?
They just have to be a resident of the, of the City of Pontiac.
They hold an elected office or anything?
No. No, they would not, they cannot be a, you know, council member or any...
You don't tell somebody the mayor's and all that.
Right, yes.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else got a question from this floor? All right.
I do.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So Garland, we understand that they can't hold an elected office at the time, but isn't, do they have to be out of office for a period of time before they can run for another, for the elected position as a commissioner?
All right, you, you're asking if they were previously like elected council person or something?
Correct.
If they're, no, if they're out of office, they can, can run. Yes.
I just want clarification because I know that there is some stuff in the charter that says that you have to wait a year.
The nurse says a year.
That's what I thought, that's why I asked the clerk.
Yeah, it does say a year.
Monique, can you get your charter? Monique, stop.
Is that what you're saying, commission member?
A commission member for an elected official, yeah.
Right, because, because the charter is different.
I just want clarification. You see, I'm not the only, I'm, I'm asking the question, but we have people in the audience that are concerned about it.
Right. The, the year requirement has nothing to do with being on the charter commission. If, what I think you may be speaking to, there is a provision in the charter which if a commission or something like that, or a position or something is created which prevents an elected official from serving on it for one year after...
This is somebody who's been in office and wants to be re-elected to something else. That's why I'm asking the question.
Right, then, yeah, they would have the opportunity to, to run for the charter commission as long as they're not currently in office at the time of the election.
I don't know, because I was working out today.
When, when, excuse me, when we got elected to the charter, I, my name is on this particular Anybody that was holding an office or anything like that could not run for that seat. Everybody that was on, that was on that committee when we put the charter together, staying up all night long and having to go to work the next morning, it was all people that had nothing to do with anything in here.
So actually, I'm going to defer to the city attorney because state law takes precedence. And there is nothing, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing in the state law provision as relates to the establishment of charter commissions that prevents someone who is no longer in office, a councilman could not, a current council member could not get elected, or mayor could not get elected to serve on the charter commission. But if they previously were the, the mayor or city council, it says nothing about a one-year provision before they could run from the charter commission.
Yeah, I would like to take a look at that. I believe that the clerk is correct in that regard. I would like to confirm that, that the state law, there's, there's not a one-year waiting period before someone can run to serve on an election commission. I'd like to confirm that, but I believe he's correct.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll do an update next week, Mr. Clerk, so we can have clarity. And we're gonna move on to your next agenda item, which is medical marijuana application review.
Look in the charter, Kathy, that's all I can say.
So, so again, and probably on that matter, you want an update from the city attorney because state law trumps charters. State law supersedes charters.
Counsel President, I'd be happy to provide that update next week.
Yes, if you can provide that for next week just for clarity.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to item number three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And so this is an update on the medical marijuana process in the City of Pontiac. So I have with me Jonathan Starks, who serves as the regulatory analyst and reviews various portions of the application. So just to briefly go over the application process, applications were submitted for provisioning centers from January 6th through the 27th of 2020. We can, per ordinance 2357B, we can license up to 20 provisioning centers. And then you approved ordinance 2363, the zoning ordinance, which divided it up into districts. So no more than five in the Caesar Chavez district, no more than five in the downtown district, no more than five in the non-overlay, no more than five in Walton, for a total of 20. We have an unlimited number of growers and processors, secure transporters and safety compliance that we can license. So we have completed the review of all the provisioning center applications and I have announced the various rankings. All of the Caesar Chavez, downtown, and the non-overlay have went through the hearing officer process. People have received their decision letters. So Caesar Chavez, so this is the Caesar Chavez district on here. You have the top five ranked provisioning center applications, Riz Cannabis, and the location of where these, I thought it was important for the public to be aware of where these potential provisioning centers will be going. Westford Holdings LLC, Greenhouse Farms Pontiac LLC, Yellow Tail Ventures Incorporated and the Curate Leaf TC Incorporated. Then in addition to that, we have issued a conditional approval for PGSH Holdings for a Class C grower, which is to license, to grow up to 1,500 plants.
Excuse me, if you can turn your cell phone off.
Additionally, processors, secure transporter, safety compliance can also locate in Caesar The downtown overlay district, what can be licensed in that district are no more than five provisioning centers. And again, Common Citizen, Green, I mean, Three Green LLC, Zenith Ventures LLC, and then RTMC Enterprises actually submitted two applications and they ranked within the, these were the applications that ranked within the top five, and then these are the, the locations of those five provisioning centers. And then in addition to that, secure transporter and safety compliance can also locate downtown. In the Walton Boulevard, which I just announced the, the rankings, the top five ranked applicants are Leaf Co. Ventures, 444 Commercial Consulting LLC, 3967 Euclid LLC, Shine Cannabis, and Nature's Remedy of Pontiac. And then additionally, we've issued a conditional approval to a grower, a Class C grower, to grow up to 1,500 plants, the Tentacle Greens at 1651 East Highland. And then in the non-overlay, the top five ranked applicants are Pleasantry's, HKM Group, Greenhouse Farms Pontiac, Attitude Wellness, and Nature's Remedy of Pontiac. And if you would go to the next slide, those are the locations of where they plan to locate. Then additionally, with the non-overlay, if you remember in your zoning ordinance, these applicants would need to get a special exemption permit from the planning commission before they can open. And then additionally, you approved a conditional rezoning agreement for growers and processors to locate at the old Glenwood Plaza site. So I've identified that site and we have issued conditional approvals to Pharmaco and Family Roots for growers and for processor as well, Pharmaco and Family Roots. So actually, Family Roots has been issued two, they submitted two applications for growers, one for 500 plants and one for 1,500 plants. So I cannot issue conditional approvals to the top five ranked applicants for provisioning centers until the Medical Marijuana Commission hears the appeals of people who have appealed to the commission. If you remember, your honorable body did not approve the rules that the commission established. And then more importantly, there is a provision in the charter that prevents one current commissioner, the, the current mayor, from being eligible to serve on the commission. So until the commission has at least three legal members and the city council approves its rules, I will not forward any appeals to the commission as required by ordinance So we can actually advance to the next slide. So after applicants get their conditional approvals, then we go through the pre-permit process. So this is just, they have to obtain their pre-approval from the state of Michigan, satisfy all building safety, planning, and fire department requirements, and they have to approve to the office of the city clerk, verify proof of premises liability and casualty insurance before I can issue a permit. So for the next slide, there are several applicant growers and processors who are in, have completed portions of the pre-permit process, but no one has completed all the portions. So you can see we're, we're tracking in essence the timeline, but no one has completed all of the pre-permit process, so that's why we have not issued any permits. So as of today, we have reviewed a total of 103 provisioning center applications and a total of 116 applications altogether, nine growers, three processors, and one... Nine growers, three processors, and one, uh, secure, uh, transporter. So the, um, as we move into the implementation phase, I thought it's very important, a number of the, uh, applicants, there was a provision that they had to pledge community benefits to the residents. And as a, pretty much a lifetime municipal government professional, I've seen where a lot of times businesses make pledges, they don't fulfill them. So we want to ensure, so we will be tracking these community benefits to ensure that these businesses are good neighbors and, uh, fulfill the pledges that they have made to the community. So I've established, uh, task force, so these are the names of the task force members who will be helping, um, with that process, establishing the, uh, tracking process. Uh, and then I also want to announce that the process has taken some time, but going forward, anybody that submits an application, we plan to review them within a thirty to forty-five day, um, timeframe, really trying to, um, get it to a thirty-day timeframe. But I've made some adjustments in the review process. Number one is all the planning review, reviews will be done by my planning consultant, Giffords Webster, because we have noticed an extensive amount of time by our internal, um, planning staff. We will be transitioning all other reviews to an internal, um, reviewer. I've identified, uh, Mr. Starks, who serves as our regulatory analyst. I've trained additional clerks, office staff, in how to conduct reviews. Um, and then the default reviews will be a part of the pre-permit, uh, process, um, as well. So that concludes our, uh, presentation.
All right, anybody have any questions from the clerk from the council?
Actually, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, uh, I think at some point, on the, uh, on the secure transporters, if, if, if my memory serves me right, that person can deliver anywhere within the state of Michigan?
I believe in essence, uh, so. We, we, we only have one secure transporter to submit an application and then actually he didn't complete the, uh...
The reason I was asking because I've been seeing a lot of advertising from Soren Eagle and, and up north. And they say they come all the way, all, all the way from, uh, from there, anywhere in Michigan. So I'm, I, I, I just wanted, wanted to verify that the secure transporter, once they have that, at that provisional, they can deliver, I'm, I'm pretty sure, anywhere in the state of Michigan.
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else got a question for clerk? All right, we're gonna move on to item number four, snow removal consortium.
Yes, I'll speak to that, um, on behalf of our DPW department, as well as, uh, Dwayne Lyons, who's acting as interim DPW director, uh, as well as Dustin McClellan of the Community, Pontiac Community Foundation, who is in partnership with, uh, this local snowplow operators, um, team that we're trying to form. So this is very opportune, uh, because we know the snow is here in Michigan. And one of the things that we, uh, had this idea of doing the snowplow operators is because sometimes our DPW department, as well as our contractors, need extra help in getting the snow removed because of, we only have six trucks as opposed to twelve and fourteen in other communities our size. And so we wanted to make it a win-win by having additional local contractors to get a piece of the contract action. So, uh, they have put out recruitment and had their first meeting and some local snow, snowplow operators have applied to do that. And they'll be paid the same lane mile rate to do snowplow the street as are the other contractors the city has secured. So this is a win-win for the city. It helps, uh, some of our small local contractors get additional business at the same rate and also helps the city render the services faster, particularly when there are, uh, a lot of snow on the ground as we are probably gonna get sometime this winter. Uh, so this is still open for contractors who want to apply. They do have to have the required insurance and bonding, um, that are required for the city, uh, for us to maintain our insurance. Uh, and for those who are smaller contractors who don't quite know how to apply for that, that's why we brought in the Pontiac Community Foundation, which is working with those who are, have less of the capacity and don't have a, a turnover engagement, so that they can help them get the qualifications in order to get the required, uh, bonding and insurance in order to be part of this consortium. So we just think it's a win-win for the city, win-win for the citizens to get the snow removed faster. Uh, but we need extra help. It's a win-win for our, uh, DPW department to be able to, uh, do the job in a excellent way they want to continue to do it. And it's a win-win for our local contractors who can get a little bit more of the business of the city. So that's what's happening and we've actually, uh, I know they've tried in previous years to put this together. I'm happy for the team that's actually making this happen. We actually have some people who've already signed up. And so bring on the snow, we're ready.
Okay. All right. Um, which brings us to, uh, we already talked about item five, five A, five B. We talked about item six and seven. We talked about item number eight, which brings us to item number nine.
Number nine will be presented by our economic development director, Lynette Phillips. And this is concerning, uh, CDBG block grant years two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty.
Yeah, this is about scheduling the public hearing. So, um, uh, Attorney Sharp?
This is the one with the seniors again with, um, doing the home service type, uh, project, so.
To reprogram the funds from housekeeping to safety and repair, still for, uh, seniors and disabled, uh, residents. Can I proceed?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, in your package, you have a resolution to schedule a public hearing to reprogram CDBG funds from, um, program year twenty, um, eighteen and twenty nineteen, fifty thousand, uh, dollars for each year. Um, again, the housekeeping, um, service wasn't provided. The seniors didn't want strangers in their homes and, um, and the, uh, people didn't want to come into their homes. But for this service, it provides up to six hundred dollars of repairs. This could be for tree trimming, um, roof repairs, repairs around, um, people's homes that can actually be done outside. It also is the option, if there's some work to be done inside, it can be done as well. But this is for, um, safety and repair to, um, seniors and disabled residents' homes. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. How many of your children, what services have you seen?
I attached, um, some examples, but it could be up to six hundred dollars. It's, it is, it, it's not specific, but it's just for minor repairs around their homes. And that's just that we get a lot of complaints for like, you know, tree trimming or things that, um, that's just one example. If they want, um, gutters repaired or replaced, but it's, the limit is actually up to six hundred dollars. So all they have to do is request the service. We've got a hundred thousand dollars and, um, we'll just, we can go until the, the funds are exhausted.
Okay, you said you had fifty thousand dollars, so...
Fifty thousand each year. So there, this was for two years, um, program year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. That's why the dollar amount is one hundred thousand dollars. So there was no activity done in those two years.
Let me understand, I'm saying you give me the six hundred dollars for, um, a term of tree in my yard. So who provided the service to trim the tree? They go get the person themselves or are you trying to...
It, it, they actually could actually, um, well, we have to approve it because we're, you know, providing the funds. So we would work with a company, it could actually even be our own, well, I don't know if it could be our DPW services, but it could be a contractor. We've done this in other, um, instances where we've contracted work out. So depending on the service...
Okay, um, Councilwoman Peetler and then, uh, Councilwoman Warren.
Who ensures that there's liability insurance to cover this?
The company that would provide the work.
Okay, so the company's gonna provide the work. They are going to fill out an application and provide you the insurance certificate so we know for a fact...
That they would be a bonded, qualified contractor. The city of Pontiac, we have several contractors that we have available that have actually been vetted and gone through the process.
I understand that, but that's not, you, I did hear you say that they could hire their own too. So I want to make sure that...
And that's why I said if they do, not, not hire their own, if they want to use someone, we would have to provide approval for that.
Okay. I just, because liability is a big concern.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Warren.
Uh, is there an income level? I mean, uh, how, how will you go about this? I mean, and what, what, what constitute a senior?
We're seniors.
I, I, I wanna know.
What is the, what is the requirement, is what you're asking?
This, this does fit in with the, um, poverty cri- criteria.
That needs to be put out there because you have seniors calling out here, wanting them, and, and then they'll say, well, I'm a senior, but you didn't tell me. So that needs to be put out there that, um, there's a guide, guideline and, and just, uh, is it, and it will...
And, and actually, this, again, that's why we're keeping it within this realm. But, um, when the CDBG application was submitted, it was based on, you know, a certain part, poverty criteria.
Yes, uh, Lynette.
Hold on, excuse me, um, Ma- Ma- Madam Mayor, you, you haven't been recognized and I don't want to lose my train of thought, but I will recognize you, Madam Mayor. Uh, because I want to be clear on two, two separate things. First, I thought this was, uh, originally gonna be sidewalks. Am I wrong about that application?
That was changed, um, be- because again, you corrected me the last time. And let me just say, because it was going to go from housekeeping to sidewalks, but it was a study session and then at the last formal meeting, it changed to, uh, safety and repair. So I am re-presenting the resolution for a public hearing to reprogram the funds for safety and repair.
So, ho- ho- hold on, ho- ho- hold on, just very, very quickly. I wanna, I wanna stay succinct, um, because time has been well spent. I wanna just kinda stay on track. In between our meetings, the council hasn't met or deliberated as a body. And so if we think something is gonna be sidewalks, uh, two meetings ago and then it changes to senior services this week, uh, and then we schedule a public hearing for that without any rationale or update on why it switched from sidewalks, that's just problematic for us to flow to the public because they think that this is going to be one thing and then it's something else. I'm not even saying that the senior program idea is bad. My concern though and question is, we get a ton of home money that used to be eligible for citizens to use for home repair through the CDBG program home funds. And so when it moved to the county, they changed it from a grant program to a loan program and that's when our numbers decreased tremendously. So the concept may be good, but we need to make sure that we're making a consistent decision and talking about the same thing week to week. And so, uh, to schedule a public hearing for this, and I recognize the, uh, the mayor, I'm just really concerned about why we didn't have a bigger pot because I don't know, once you start with a hundred thousand dollars...
Uh, excuse me, um, so if I can just continue because again, um, for November sixteenth, which was a study session, I, um, presented, um, the housekeeping to go to sidewalks. But for the formal session, because we were allocating CDBG funds for program year twenty twenty-two, you know, more for sidewalks, and we have considerable funds for sidewalks. But for this situation, these housekeeping dollars were unused. So they were being reprogrammed to something else. But you corrected me that to say, well, you can't change from, um, study to formal. So now at this study session, I'm requesting again, a, um, a public hearing to reprogram housekeeping to safety and repairs or safety, I mean, I'm sorry, for seniors and disabled residents.
Okay, uh, Ms. Phillips. There has to be some communication from administration to council. I've gotten about fifteen emails about agenda items that needed to be added to this particular meeting between, uh, Friday and today. Nowhere throughout that process, and this is, this is nothing on you, Ms. Phillips, but nowhere from administration was we want to shift a hundred thousand dollars from what we talked about two weeks ago to something totally different this week. And so I don't want to belabor that. What I'm saying is somewhere along this pipeline, could have been an email, which they send me many, about reprogramming this. So the council could have came to this meeting all on the same, uh, mindset at least to ask questions about housekeeping and other things. Because right off the bat, I got liability, I got contractors. Who's to say that these invoices are not reimbursements? What kind of pictures and procedures and other things are you gonna need? Who's gonna monitor this program? Because I think it's a great concept. I get contacted about seniors that need honey-do lists all the time. The problem is the implementation and I don't know if a hundred thousand dollars is enough to even start with having sixty thousand seniors and eighty percent of the city qualifies for CDBG or used to it. I mean, the property rate has gone up, so it might be seventy-five percent. But either way, a good majority of the city qualify. And so if we're talking about this, I would love to have mentioned it so people can come up to the meeting that we're having on the other issues and say, we want to spend another hundred thousand on this particular process to get it off the ground. Because you're gonna need somebody to monitor that just to do this and make sure that they're accepting the receipts. Because they can't come to the clerk's office, right? And then if they come to the, uh, mayor's office and it's not staffed, then what, what does that process look like? Then what is the timeline for reimbursement and all these other things that happen when the city is providing a service? So I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues.
Ms. Mr. Doyle, this is the same resolution that was presented last week. The difference is in the agenda, it, the title was incorrect. And, um, interim clerk, if you want to, we, you and I, you and I had this discussion. I said, well, you know what, the language changed. And you said, well, the city council members may not accept the resolution because the agenda item title is different. But this same resolution was presented last week and I'm just reintroducing it again this week in a study session. More or less, I mean, it's, it's not a new item, but it's, uh, it's being reintroduced.
Oh, okay, uh, Madam Mayor and, uh, uh, Mr. Doyle.
Yes, you made some comments, uh, uh, Chairman, that I think you said this is, you need more money for this. I think that's what, you're, you're the point of your comments, where I agree with you. Hundred thousand dollars though is something to start with, quite a bit to start with. Uh, and I just bring to the point, there is more money that's available. And one of the proposals that's coming from administration as a result of the ARP town halls that we've been having, is that we do supply some of the ARP money for also, uh, home repairs for people. And, uh, like the, like you mentioned, the county under their administration changed the home funds from grants to loans a while ago. We want to, under ARP, that's an old fund, to change them back to grants once again. Uh, and this can be for people of, uh, the whole city. Now, and, and somebody mentioned seniors, you know, which seniors, a lot of seniors in here, our eyes light up. CDBG block grant funds, which we're talking about, is always because we're an entitlement city because we have certain, um, population which is under the poverty line. So those are the people that all of the programs that CDBG are oriented, are oriented for. That's why you can only do sidewalks in certain neighborhoods, neighborhoods that qualify under the CDBG guidelines. So I just wanted to, as we had that discussion, just wanted to make sure everybody knew what seniors we were talking about when you're talking about.
I, I, I think the senior question was about age. Is it fifty-five, is it sixty, is it sixty-five, is it super seniors? What is the guideline for senior citizens to qualify?
The, uh, let me just say...
Age guideline.
Fifty-five.
Okay, all right. Attorney Sharp?
I think, well, okay. So my, my, my...
But this is the same program, the house, for housekeeping. No, no one even accessed this program. I, I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead, Attorney Sharp.
The, the only concern I, the concerns that I have are what you just addressed. First of all, council is in agreement with the mayor as it relates to bringing the CDBG back in house, right? But it's a matter of, of trying to, I guess, um, logistically work that out as well as being approved and so forth. With that, this type of program requires monitoring. You are not really in the position, I think it's a great program too. I think seniors, they need help. It, it's wonderful, but is the city in a position to oversee this type of program?
And so, uh, Attorney Sharp, and, and people keep saying this is the same program. Originally, um, it was one of the ideas that I worked with some other people and came up with because OSHA was doing the senior citizen program and we brought it. And then the mayor, uh, got the administration to adopt it and now we have a program. The, the reason that this money was, uh, easily allocated back then is because OSHA was running the program. We weren't going as a city cleaning up nobody's house. So that was, that was not a city function. What I'm saying to you is the concept sounds good. What I'm saying to you is, the concept sounds good, but if you don't have the mechanism in place, OSHA was already doing this in Southfield and other places. So it made sense for them to do this work in Pontiac with seniors. If we're going to reallocate this money, we need to have a system in place like OSHA or somebody else to give a hundred thousand dollars, that was my point. And so it's going to take staffing and other things to do it because O- OSHA did this as part of their hundred and eight programs that they have running in the county already. So I just wanted to bring that up for clarity.
You make an excellent point.
If memory serves me correctly, also, there was a pot of money that the city allocated to them and a pot of money that wasn't spent.
Yes, and then we. The, the program was for deconstruction. They couldn't find the people to do the deconstruction. So we said, let's do another OSHA project so they wouldn't lose the money, which became senior citizens, which didn't get used for two years, and now it's back to us um to do this hundred thousand dollars, so.
So you make an excellent point in terms of who oversees it. But just with our other programs, for instance, when we do sidewalks, when we approve funding for sidewalks, we don't at the time have who's going to actually do the repair or for, or uh driveways. The, you're, and the point that you're making, just in terms of even like the lawn service, that was a program that OSHA provided. But the funds were available to proceed, you know, with the, actually having the service completed. This, the request for this resolution is for a public hearing.
Ma- Ms. Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
The difference between sidewalks and senior services is that's a function that if the city had full staff, they would do anyway. Some of these things, they can oversee and they can expect sidewalks, they do it all the time. Every time uh AT&T or whoever tears up a right of way, the city comes out and inspects the sidewalk. So we can easily monitor the service. What I'm saying to you is, the concept for this is great, so I don't want you to misconstrue what I'm saying. What I'm trying to make sure is that if we're going to allocate money to do this, that the service does not become a hindrance to the city, but becomes a benefit if we're going to do it with a hundred thousand dollars. And so we don't have any of that kind of detail right now, and so it's not helpful uh as a council to allocate a hundred thousand dollars when we know other services uh can run much smoother because we had the mechanisms in place.
When we had youth services, again, we contracted with Pontiac Youth Assistance. But at the time when the funds were allocated, all of those systems, all of those um procedures and processes were not in place. The first thing to do is actually have the funding for the program. And, and I mean, once you get to the, the point, then we would actually bring forth to the uh city council, well, who is the contractor? Because we would bring contracts to the city for your approval. That would be the next step in this process. Right now, again, we're just trying to um put these funds into a bucket for, to provide some services for seniors and disabled people. And to have a public hearing for people to come and provide their comments um is just what the ask is for this evening.
Okay, Councilwoman Miller.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Miller and then Councilwoman Waterman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Lynette, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, last week we mentioned, I know I mentioned to you to put everything in sidewalks.
That, that was for program year twenty twenty-two, that, we already passed that. That's, that is for the um public hearing, for all eight hundred thousand dollars to go into sidewalks.
And maybe you weren't here then, when I, when I got on council. For the last three years, we've been asking, we've been pleading with this administration, you weren't here for some of it, but you've been here for a lot of it, about bringing the CDBG funds. And this is what's going to happen to the citizens, see, they suffer from the mishap of administration not bringing in our own CDG uh employees back. Cause I used to work here with them. So this is where I'm at now, there's no monitoring of this. It, I mean, you got, it's just like, you can't follow the money. You can't follow the money. The reason I asked you those questions, cause I was thinking to myself, well, hey, maybe my neighbor want to do this. And I'll, I'll just get me a tree cut off. And where, how do you determine what person needed more? Because I have some uh constituents in my district needed more than others. So what is your criteria? There's no mechanism for nothing that you're doing here. We can't hold you accountable for every penny that you're going to distribute out to the citizens. That's what I'm looking for. There's no accountability, there's liability, there's a lot of mishaps on the other end. Now, Mr. President, you know, the council can do what they want. My, my suggestion is, allocate this to the sidewalks. Because at the end of the day, the people is going to suffer. We got to give the money, we have to give the money. You waited to the last minute to bring this forward to the council like you always do. Always do, always do, check the record. And so now we in, we in a catch twenty-two situation. This is going to be something, I, 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 actually, I'm just going to say it. You're going to pick who you want to pick, you're going to give the money to who you want to give it to, and that's going to get it done.
You know, we have several programs that we deploy, and I'm just going to give one.
Yeah, but what is the criteria for them? How do you determine who needs them?
The city, we um, we partnered with um Oakland County for um, for uh restaurants and business owners. And they, we had eighty thousand dollars in cash and another like a hundred and forty thousand dollars in products and services. We um advertised, promoted the programs, contacted them, sent out letters, held um public hearings and, and promoted, here's these services and these resources are available. And we got resp- resp- sponsors. And again, we spent the money, the businesses, we were pleased, and, and there was a whole report on that. So in terms of how we manage and how we promote, this would be just another example for that. These funds are approved, we're going to advertise and or promote and let people know that this service is available to you. People call the city, uh city hall all the time, they need help with this, they need help with that. They, they, uh, they're trees, they're gutters. And, and here's an opportunity just to provide this resource to them.
I have no problem with the citizen in that, uh Lynette, that's not a problem. I will, I want them to get everything they deserve. But for my past, from working here, they don't get it. They don't get it, they're picked over. You pick certain people, like the criteria for the sidewalk. You know, I'm telling you, the sidewalks, I don't know, you don't, you didn't even have a criteria for the sidewalk. Who determines who gets sidewalk fixed? And by the way, I mentioned several that I had some constituents, some in different districts. Sidewalks were messed up or whoever your contractor is, you may not want to look at, maybe, I don't know who's doing them, but the sidewalks are being jacked up. So who goes out? We used to have a contract compliance when I worked here. See, we don't have any of those mechanisms, Mr. President, we don't know what's going on with this money. And on my way out, guess what? It stops with me.
You know, in our community.
I'm not going to do it, I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay, and our community, um, the um, community development subcommittees, that, that's why we have those meetings, to discuss and present information.
No, uh, come on, Lynette, that's a discussion meeting, we don't get any of that.
I'm going, yeah, I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Waterman and then we're going to move on.
Thank you. Um, you know what? And I, I hear our colleague saying, this is just, this is just, we, we going on off up in here. We just changed stuff at Willie Neal's. I'm going to throw this and see what stick on the wall and see how this is going to go.
There's, there's some.
This makes absolutely no sense, be quiet, I'm talking, thank you. So my thing is, there is a nonprofit that possibly, or, or, or there's a business that maybe we can possibly give some of this money to, I've been thinking about, that helps the seniors. Meals on Wheels, Meals on Wheels helps every senior in this city. And, and maybe this money could be allocated towards that. And that way, there's somebody going to be watching that money, how that money goes. So that's just a suggestion, but all this just throwing stuff out here, I'm, I'm, I'm about sick and tired of it.
That, that is a suggestion, and that's what could come about in the public hearing. That the, the, the resolution is just for a public hearing, for comments from the, from the community. For people to say, do we want to reprogram this funding to where? The housekeeping services, the seniors did not.
People don't know, and you'll probably have who you want in here stating where they want that money to go. So I'm putting it out there, people for Meals on Wheels be down here for the public hearing.
Okay, well, we, what, so the great part about this is this is a study session, so we can schedule the public hearing next week. Um, what we're going to do right now is go to item number twelve, which is a resolution to authorize the city clerk to post a notice of proposed budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two to the Oakland Press to transfer a hundred and eighty uh thousand dollars from the general fund balance, general ledger account one zero one zero 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 three nine zero dot zero 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 to capital improvement fund GL account four four five two six five nine seven six dot zero zero one, building additions and improvements. Um, and I would like to make an amendment to this agenda, um, this, this item. I think uh in order to track the funds and make sure that no ARP funds are used, it should all come out of the city council budget. And so my proposal will be that we take the hundred thousand dollars uh from the animal control and then take the uh, the additional eighty thousand dollars for our legal fees um that we have, our legal services that we have not been using.
Did we use that money for the park, for the skate park?
This is what, this is the resolution about the skate park.
Okay, thank you.
That what I'm saying is, it needs to be reconciled uh where the money from the park is going to come from. And so what I'm saying is, in order to track the money, it should all come from city council budget. So the new administration, whoever comes in, can easily track it if it is an audit or whatever. It can show up in one line item, because what I'm concerned about is using the capital improvement fund at all. And then they saying this is an eligible expense for ARP. And because we got the money, we'll go back in and tag that um in the twenty-fourth hour. And then the thirty-one million dollars that the people think that they have, they may not have. And I don't want to be responsible for any of that. So uh my question to my colleagues is, um, is that something that you want to consider? Cause then we can vote on that next week.
Why don't we just take it all out the general fund, she offered, she had another.
What, 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 listen, listen to what I'm saying. I, I need to be as specific as possible, Councilwoman Miller, you just did a, a whole piece on making sure every dollar is accounted for. The general fund is over thirty-two million and then growing, right? City council budget is under a million and it ain't changing. Our salary is locked in, and so we know what our expenses are. And we know uh that other than what Jamarko Mullins and Horton is charging us, we haven't used any additional legal services, and for sure, you haven't used any animal control. So what I'm saying is, in order to make sure that it's a seamless transition to the money for the skate park and it can be tracked, that we use the council budget in order to do it.
My only concern about that, Mr. President, we won't be here to know if it's being tracked or not, see, just what I'm saying.
Go ahead.
The budget is still online and open to the public, we can still review it.
I just, I think to the, what the council president is trying to suggest is that if in fact you take it from the council's budget, that money doesn't have to be replaced. However, if you started talking about the general fund, you take the money out, potentially, they may want to replace that. Even though this is replacing funds that were taken from somewhere else. So you have sufficient money in the legal services because, I mean, that's over two hundred forty-seven thousand, you weren't able to use it. So if you take the eighty out of that and then the animal control from council, and the new council can potentially do a budget amendment to put it back when they get in, but it still stays under council.
Well, I will be back, cause I want animal control back.
So I'm just saying, it, it, you have the money there.
Okay.
And it won't have to be, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, and so we have, go, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
So, uh, thank you, Mr. President. So just for clarity, really what you're saying is, actually, item thirteen, as opposed to transferring eighty thousand out of the, a general fund, it would be transferred out of one oh one, um, one oh one eight oh four zero zero zero. The eighty thousand will come out of there, and then the hundred thousand is coming out of the animal control, which we're both under city council. So I can, you know, modify it and you can take action next week.
Okay, is everybody, um.
Mr. Chair. The finance director would like to speak so you can verify that those funds are there.
Uh, excuse, excuse me, if the funds are not in, if the funds are not in the city council budget.
We got some problems.
Then we have a problem where we do not have to have a meeting until January. So if, 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 if he's telling us, hold on, listen, ma- 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 madam mayor, madam mayor, madam mayor.
We have a city attorney there sitting right here, the finance director, I just asked him to give you some accurate. So you have the right numbers, you wanted your accurate figures, the finance director.
Excuse me, hold on, I, I just need to say this for clarity, I just need to say this for clarity. We have had zero animal control. We put two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars into legal fees where we have not hired one lawyer. What I'm saying to you, who? Listen to what I'm saying to you, madam mayor. If you are paying Jamarko Mullins.
Out of this money.
Out of our city council money, when we've allocated money to Jamarko Mullins and Horton to almost a tune of a million dollars annually, then we have a big problem. So, Mr. Carrington.
Please.
Please humor me and telling me why we don't have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars between those two funds, which we have not used.
Um, I know it's getting late here, so that, that's not, uh. That's not, that's not the comment that I wanted to make. Um, so, uh, the, 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 um. So, so in short, the, 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 the concern I have is not that there's, that there's available funding there. As, as I um provided in item number twelve, there is uh funding in that, that general ledger account for animal control. The, the issue is, is you see the budget amendment, that's the, or the, the two budget amendments that are in front of you, the options for these, for this matter. Uh, we moved the money into the capital improvement fund. So it's not a question about where the money's coming from, it's a matter of where the money's being moved to via the budget amendment. And we are required, under the state, um, you know, budgeting act, we have to make sure that any expenditures are done from the correct general ledger account. So for example.
So you, hold on, uh, cause I, I, I want to make sure that I'm clear. You're telling me that our attorney fees are in the capital improvement?
No, 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 that's not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm, what I'm saying, in order to, in order to fund this, this matter, which is the skate park project, we're, we're looking to move the funds, we're looking to identify funds and reprogram those funds into the capital improvement fund. So the, the monies would have to be moved out of the, the city council's budget into the capital improvement fund. If I understood your comments, uh. If I correctly understood your comments, the concern I have is that we could not make these expenditures out of the council budget. We can't, we, I, I, we couldn't, we couldn't make the expenditures for this, for this project out of the animal control. We can move the money out of animal control into the capital improvement, and that's what we have before you. Both of these budget amendments move monies from one general ledger account into the capital improvement fund.
But that, that's, 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 that's what we're, that's what we're saying we're doing. Hold on, uh, Mr. Carrington. The only difference between your item number thirteen and my item number thirteen is that the eighty thousand dollars will be coming out of our legal funds. So it would all be out of the city council account, so the transfer will track from city council to capital improvement, not from any general fund dollars. Because then you can fudge and do whatever else needs to be done in order to make those things line up. What I'm saying is, I just want this particular project to pass the eye test and the smell test in a way that's feasible because we haven't used this money. We know this money is there, council has not used it in any way. If the money is not there, then that is a bigger problem that I am not qualified to talk about. So the.
Ask him, is the money there? He knows, he take care of the money.
Let me be clear, there, the money is there, there, there's, there's no question about the funding being available. Uh, I just wanted to, and, and maybe I misunderstood your comment. Thank you. Um, but that, because you referenced the general fund, um, but that the money is being moved from the general fund into the capital improvement fund.
Yes, Attorney Sharp.
I'm looking at today's printout, there's two hundred and forty-seven, eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars as of today.
In our legal fund.
This is for the legal, legal services. So this has nothing to do with Jamarko Mullins, this is a separate account that you guys budgeted.
Yeah, that's correct, that, that's the independent legal council fund.
Exactly right, that, that fund, that has nothing to do with.
So it should not be touched. All right, we're going to move on to item number fourteen. Oh, we approved fourteen and fifteen, okay, so now we're on item number sixteen. Who's presenting from administration?
Yes, uh, I will turn this over to the um city attorney. But this was something, uh, the opioid class action lawsuit, and everybody knows the devastation that opioid addiction has caused uh for our country. And uh as a class action lawsuit was being filed, uh filed by a number of different uh law firms, I elected to make sure the city had its own filing, whether it depended upon the state and the county to pass it down. I elected to make sure the city had its own filing, rather than depend upon the state and the county to pass it down. So that has been several years ago. The, uh, one of the class off, class action lawsuits have now been won. And the city is now working with the city attorneys for the uh, attorneys who are handling the class action uh, to say that the city is now going to be part of the award uh, recipients of that money, and so they're here to tell you about how that is going to be handled.
Okay, I I just have a question before you get started, Mr. Clerk. Um, when did the council authorize the mayor to enter into a separate lawsuit for the city of Pontiac in the opioid crisis?
I I think that may have been a, um, it it was not a separate lawsuit. We, I believe, served as local counsel for a national law firm. So it it, I believe it's what council was aware of, is what was authorized.
So, so what I'm saying to you, Mr. Clerk, and I'm glad you're here, if you can provide the council with our document that allowed us to enter in litigation, this is good, that the city's getting money. I just wanna make sure that this body participated. Uh, because I just don't remember saying that we were part of the opioid, but I might be forgetting. So if you can provide the date that we uh, authorize uh, the mayor to enter into litigation, that will be helpful.
Sure, and and just so you know, the the proposed settlement, if if approved by council, again, you have to approve this, is approximately one point one million dollars. That is unrestricted dollars that would go into the general fund and then could be allocated, however, council and or the administration.
When I'm respected to get that money?
I'm sorry? Yeah, so that's a great question, uh, Councilwoman Miller. So the money is paid out over, I believe, ten years. So it's a hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years, as I believe, and and all the documentation, I believe, was included in the packet. Attorney Chubb was much more involved in this than I was. Um, but of course, I've had conversations with the administration about the claim, so. The the proposed settlement is about one point one million dollars, and and you can see in the paper where there's multiple communities statewide that are involved in the same litigation. And uh, how it was parceled out, I believe, is dependent upon uh, population. But I will provide the requested information, Council President.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um, yeah, you find out about one million dollars? Okay, all right. Okay, so now we're on item number seventeen, which is a resolution to adopt the final version of the merge agreement between the city of Pontiac Police Fire and Viva and Super Viva.
Uh, there are several steps that need to be done for the retirees to get their money, for the for the GERS overfunding to be transferred to the Viva, so that all this can happen. And the person who has guided this process from the very beginning and of getting the IRS approval is Attorney Samantha Copaz, and she's now here to address the final documentation for the merge.
When, is this?
This is, this, this right here is what we had on the gen- fi- police and fire. The police and fire did not have their tax base done. They just got that approved. Is that correct? Um, Samantha, so this is what this is talking about right now. And so what we have done for the GERS, now this, we have to do this so they can get their, their money. But go ahead on, uh.
So the final step of the um, settlement agreement effectuation relates to merging the police and fire Viva, which has been in effect since, um, I believe, the nineteen nineties, into the newly formed Viva that was approved by the IRS last year. And so this merger agreement has been reviewed by council for both the police and fire Viva and for the new Viva, um, and also has been approved by both boards. Um, this is going to be authorizing, instead of having to administer two different healthcare um, accounts, um, this is gonna streamline the process and have a single one with the new Viva being the surviving entity. And this is all spelled out in the settlement agreement.
Okay, and this item will be voted on next week. Okay, item number eighteen, ARP recapped, um, we're gonna mark as received. And then we'll get to item number nineteen, um, which is the one that Councilwoman Miller brought about youth recreation discussion, so I will start with her.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and I wanna direct this question to our attorney, Attorney Sharp. This in regards to the forensic audit. In light of, we have passed two resolutions. Uh, we have asked and pleaded with administration as far as uh, doing a uh, forensic audit. I passed out to my colleagues four sheets, but one of us wanted a copy of the brochure that I received yesterday. You know, and as I said before, on my way out of here, I'm gonna type some like loose ends and and uh, fix some things that should've been probably fixed a long time ago. That this administration is currently doing what we tell them not to do. I get in the mail yesterday, a fall brochure of the rec center. Now, with that being said, I'm asking uh, you, as as a, as the attorney, as a seven member, I'm asking my uh, colleagues, one of the sheets is a signature for each uh, council member, if they were signing and giving to Attorney Sharp, in uh, support of uh, having a forensic audit done. In light of this, because this is something that needs to be done, I want done, least, least we can see we tried, we did what we supposed to do, because what's going on here is illegal crap. This, it really is. And I'm asking you, as our city attorney, uh, what is your position on that? And as my colleagues, are you willing to sign and say, hey, I'm in agreement? We're doing a forensic audit, we need one, we need it now.
But, so, Councilwoman.
And 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 I wanna take it to circuit court, not, you know, we.
Well, Councilwoman Miller, you already have a resolution that was passed by council, where you had agreement of the body to do a forensic audit. The mayor would not allow for it because of the reasons that she stated. So your body did agree to do it. Now, do you have reason to have concerns? Of course, I have many concerns, because again, you've got somebody sitting in a position that's not budgeted, that's getting paid. You've got the budget for Pyrec, you stripped out everything allocated for the location, but yet you're still operating, the city's operating out of that location. The village was cut in half. I'm not sure how those expenses, again, are getting paid when, again, council did not authorize anything to be paid as it relates to that location. And again, new individuals are being hired without council budgeting for those positions.
That's just mine, you know, and and I hear what you're saying, but you know what? What's wrong with us filing? We can say, we we sitting there saying, why can't we just go to the court? Why can't you go to the court and say, we're going to file, and we're going to court and see what the court, because everything is just named, think about it, all illegal stuff.
Well, let me say this to you. Because of the timeline, first of all, even if you did a lawsuit in hand delivery, by the time it gets started, that it'll be a new administration.
That's good, it could continue on.
So, so the new administration, I would imagine, would wanna do it regardless. He has to. Nobody's gonna wanna touch a book without having a financial, uh, forensic.
But, you know, unfortunately, we don't know what the new administration's gonna do. I learned over the year, you never know. You don't never know what people gonna do.
But you're not gonna be a part.
But what I'm saying is, my part, for all these things that has went on in the last four years, you named them several things that went wrong. There are other things. It's things that this city need to know why this council was always in disagreement with this administration. These things that the city need to know, while we were sitting here, I don't come here to argue. I do come here to argue with the mayor, I come here to take care of business, and that's what we have done, at least, that's what I feel I have done. Constantly, flyer coming in mail, programs all over the place. All I'm saying to my colleagues is to get myself off the boat and say, hey, I did everything we could. You as an attorney file it, if it throws it out, so be it. But that's all, that's where I'm at. Because right now, we're not doing anything to her. We're just sitting here saying, we can't do it.
What I'm saying now is that the issue is gonna be determined as soon.
Right.
But still, I I, well, at least me, I wanna go out and say, I tried.
The point is, first of all, the problem with me, the problem with me, who's going to authorize and give me the funds to even file the lawsuit?
Didn't you just say that we had two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
The reason that you guys have two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in there is because you haven't been able to access it.
Right.
Because, think about it, some of your contractors still were not paid. Though you had the legal right to pay them. We've got contractors out here that I know of, that I've talked to, that are owed sixty thousand dollars that have not been paid.
So, um, uh, Councilwoman Miller, uh, I think that what we have reached a point of, and this newsletter is proof of, that maybe should've been done a long time ago, is a vote of no confidence from the council. With a document stating all of the list of numerous things that have not been uh, done, uh, as such paying contractors, paying our lawyers. And so the fact that we can't get representation, because it took our lawyers almost two years to get their final payment, is a problem, and that may be something, as a resolution, as a body, that we haven't filed, that should be filed in the records and the annals of uh, the city of Pontiac.
Yes, cause it looked like we haven't done anything. It's like we've accepted anything the mayor told us.
What I'm, what I'm saying to you, Councilwoman Miller, is everybody has their individual list. If you would like to bring a resolution that says that, then that's something that I can support, because we know that this is egregious, and I understand the symbolism of what you're saying, but we've done a great job as council of protecting the taxpayer dollars. Every time we've saved them money, I'm not about to go out of council going against what we've done, myself for twelve years, you for four years, to prove that this lady is wrong. The voters of the city of Pontiac had spoke. Uh, and 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 loud and resounding, but if we want to speak as a council.
Yeah, but the voters also, voters also spoke that we have, we are of no confidence. They got the wrong, they got the wrong people in place that they think is wrong. But especially, I'll just speak for my constituents. I'll just speak for mine, for the ones that I support. They feel like we haven't done anything as far as to stop her. Nothing, we just sitting here, and just, and which is very true.
What I'm saying to you is, Councilwoman Miller, I'm in, I'm in support of listing out what the things are that the new administration should be able to look at to go after a forensic audit. Because when you get a forensic audit, the auditors are gonna tell you, you need to be able to look and point to certain things. One of these things that they need to point to is this golf drive debacle that is not there. And so as a council, I think what we can do is show them, because nobody on, on the new council will know where the bones are buried. They just won't. And so as a council, I think that the greatest gift we can give to the citizens of Pontiac is for them to have a clear list of where to start. They can choose to start with it or not start with it, but I'm all in favor of listing it out. What I'm not in favor of is having a judge throw our case out and then have a press release from a duly elected Madam Mayor saying, the city council loses again, blah, 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 and taxpayers had to pay sixty thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I understand that there are things that are uh, egregious. I went to the Attorney General myself, Proton Carter, other people have done things because this has been out of order, and that's one of the reasons that the citizens approved the charter revision, because this gray area has been walked all over.
All over.
And and so I think that's one of the things that passed overwhelmingly, that needs to be looked at and worked on. And I think people who sat on the council previously have good ideas on what should be fixed in order to make sure that this branch of government is treated fairly, uh, not only now, but in the future. So that's my thought on it.
Hey, are we done?
Oh, Mr. President, um, um, a, 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 a small comment that we did, we, 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 uh, we, we went right by. The uh, the snow removal, uh, last year we had Ringel, uh, Dan Ringel, Dan Ringel, when he had the outside contractors. Dan Ringel did assure that the, that the intersections and the people on the corners had no snow buildup. Somebody came by and removed the snow from the intersections, from their sidewalks. I just wanna say that whoever does, whoever gets contracted to do this here, somebody gotta be responsible for windowing people's driveways who's coming down your street. If you don't know what it is, is when you clean your driveway out and and somebody working for the city's gonna come by and put snow back in your driveway. So whoever comes by and and does that, have to be in agreement that when they get to the corner houses, that they, they snow cannot be over two feet high. You can't pileup on 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 somebody's corner and 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 omit the streets. It has to be gone, it it has to be removed and taken someplace.
You know, we also have, we also have the issue where people are cleaning sidewalks, and the snowplows are coming down the road and covering the sidewalks back up.
I understand, and that that's something, we, 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 we had no, no, no information, attorney, for that.
All right, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me get my mask, and.